You need a, you need to get something.
Uh, I got, there's plenty, I got plenty of you. We're gonna start like easy, okay?
Let's say, um.
Four doors. Can't you tell I'm saying, I'm just. I don't. I just think, thanks for starting right away.
What's food, have some food.
No appearances.
Find the crew.
No appearances that we want. This evening, we have a presentation from the Italian exchange students. Will present highlights from their recent trip.
So don't tell me to give out cookies when I'm playing.
So one trip.
It's actually fun, really. How do you know my name is?
While she's getting that ready, we'll introduce ourselves. My name's Leo Kidwell. I'm 11th grade.
My name's Chris Bredeau. I'm in 10th grade.
I'm Ariel Smith. I'm a junior.
I'm Michael Wallen and I'm 10th grade.
And I'm William Martin and I'm 12th grade.
This was my day. Um, so first we landed and needed, we had three hours until we needed to board the next plane to Genoa. We found our gate and then some of us went to explore the shops. We also went to an ATM to get our first euros and then we walked around some more in the airport. And then when it was time to board, everyone took a bus tonight. My seat was a window seat and I had a pretty good view of the mountains. I got a quick nap before we landed and we'll be heading to our lug- luggage and met with our Italian. My Italian teacher has first. Her mom fed me pizza. Later, we went to, we went out. Later, we went out and met up with Leo and Ariel and their Italians. We walked around town and got gelato and sat at the beach. A while after, we started to head home and everyone went their separate ways.
Okay, so today was one of my favorite days. Um, it was our first day at the school and we got to take a city tour of Genova. And it's a really beautiful city. It's very historic. And no matter how many times I go there, I just always learn something new about it. Um, and then after we took the city tour. Scroll down, I can't remember. So it's a couple of months ago. Um, we had lunch with our Italians. Our Italians provided this delightful spread. It was a lot of really delicious breads. And yeah, it was really tasty.
Okay, so on the 14th, we, instead of going to the school, we had a day trip to two places, Comoli and San Margherita. Comoli is one of my favorite places because, I don't know, it's just beautiful. And the thing is, I thought we were going to San Margherita, but we actually went to famous Portofino. I don't know if you've heard of it, but it's really nice. And yeah, we went on the beach and we had a bunch of great food from the bakery.
Um, we started that day off by learning some K-pop dances, which experience, we got to experience the Japanese class, which is very cool.
Did he show us?
Yeah. You know what? Save that for another day. The rockers from up there. And then we also got to try some Moroccan mint tea. And this was, this came from the Arab, Arabic class. And that was really good. And then after that, we had lunch and then we went on a treasure, treasure hunt around the city. And we went to all the famous monuments and we had to get a picture of them and the first one done got a prize.
It's the 23rd.
This was the 23rd and this was the first day that we left our Italians. And, uh, we went to Orvieto, which is a town that's kind of on top of the mountain and it has a really pretty view. And we act in, yeah, please, I can't remember.
Yes, you can say.
Also, in this town, I did research on this one for the books. They have something called forchetta. You might see a picket. It's basically country ham, but Italian style. And it's really good. And after that, we went to Bagna Reggio. Which is another town where they famously sell the homes for like one euro a piece after, like if you restore them. You could see that there. We had to walk across a large bridge just to get there. Yeah, some people opted out, but it was fun. Yeah, and even Harry Styles lived there for a little bit when he sold out because I guess too many people weren't looking for us.
Was it a swing bridge?
No. That's a great. And also, if you see Chris there, can you scroll back though? Our tour guide, he liked to say, what was it? Exactly. Yeah, you know, after everything and Chris tallied it and it was over a hundred times. He said, you know, you know? Okay, this was my favorite day. And then for math nerds, this, like temple right here is one of the only ones outside of Greece where every column is spaced like, like this thing everywhere. And the thing is, the people around there were only farmers, so they don't really know who did it. But they were thinking the Phoenicians helped them when they were in a battle with the Phoenicians. And yeah, but my favorite thing was the food.
I'm hearing a similar. Yeah, the food was amazing.
Yeah, but you could taste it right here. That was for a salt mill where they used to pump the salt and there's these big piles of salt where it says, you're forbidden from touching the salt. But our tour guide was like, we're Sicilians. We do what we want. And she grabbed a big handful and everyone was allowed to try it. You'll see that there. But we got so much food. My favorite thing was there to the right. It was a swordfish steak. It hardly even tasted like fish. It was really good.
So I got.
Wow, I didn't know that. And then that's the temple of the valleys or something. That's over 600 acres of like temples and everything. And it was really nice.
This was Thanksgiving Day. Um, we went to. Uh, some temple and. That me and Leo got married this day.
And our Vissian over there.
In a, a traditional way.
Yep, pretty quick.
Um, and then. Yeah, yeah, this was in Syracuse. Oh yeah, we stopped by this restaurant and they gave us a lot of food, a lot of olives, pretty good. And then we visited the largest mosaic of the world. And then we had our Thanksgiving dinner with everyone. They had a big turkeys and they served us pumpkin pie, which actually was really good.
Is that their tradition or did they just do?
They did it for all of us.
Time they roasted a turkey ever. They went to bring home and it was delicious. The breast meat was moist and juicy. It was not dry. And then it was delicious.
And then some lady of like the hotel was singing to us and Leo joined in. And we started dancing and then the end of the night, but saying our thanks.
What is their tradition over there for Thanksgiving?
Yeah, they don't.
Their holiday.
So this was the 30th. This was our last day in Italy. Unfortunately, it was very rainy, but we went up to Caravina. I almost forgot what it's called. Um, which was this really lovely city also on top of these cliffs. And it was really hard to get into it. Thankfully, we were able to get up there on a bus. And even though it was raining and really cold and uncomfortable, it was beautiful. And we got to walk around and just see some of the gorgeous views of the coast. And then, um, a bus ride later, we stopped at Chefflu, which was another really beautiful beach town. It was still raining, so we took a short tour and then we headed back to our hotel and got ready to say goodbye to Italy. So yeah, oh, and that was a church we stopped at. It was very beautiful.
Thank you, guys.
This was our anniversary trip, 25 years of successful exchanges. And I've worked this out. I put in my letter to retirement. But by popular demand, I will assist Molly Middleton. Who is going to continue the trips and I will assist along. He decided to, one is the goal, continue just the exchange part. And we're looking at, just right now, it's one of four. And that will be then just the short exchange trip, like the 10, 11 days when the Italians are here. And then Molly's going to go with the tour agency. What I can do, and that is Northern Europe. Because my base is Italy with the driver that we have been for 20 years. And he can go to Scotland and Ireland. He cannot even go up there and rent a bus and drive us around. So she's going to do a tour package and anyone is welcome to actually participate. And that's going to be in July of 2026. And in the spring, we would just do the exchange and school part. That's kind of like an economic version of the trip. So to give more kids hopefully an opportunity. Because money's getting a little bit tight and prices are going up. So and hopefully, um, we have your, then support. That we can continue that. Now I'll just assist and teach her more about how to run and what to watch out for on the exchange. So that's. Wanted to go on one of our trips. Now it gets an hour too late to travel. Think about it. One of the things here in not being. It'll, to Italy and Sicily. Some that have already been to Greece with us. Those two ladies and her and I, we kind of like bottled in paint. I outsourced the camera this time. I'm very possessive of the camera. But I had to outsource it because I was always trailing behind and I was tired of taking pictures from, it was behind. These became my photographers. It worked really well. And, uh, and unfortunately she had to give up halfway through the trip. And she managed, in the meantime, her problem fixed. I have my problem fixed. So now, thank you for your support and hopefully still have a couple of spots for the Denmark trip in the summer and June. And we're going to have to Morocco, Portugal and Spain trip, Southern Spain trip in November. Dogs are taken care of, parents and.
Can I ask a, can I ask you one question? I have permitted to ask one question. How many of you, this is a multiple, this is, we've gone more than once. Good, cool. Okay, this is caring. Very good.
I'd like to add, I really do appreciate everything Rita has done for the students at the high school to enable them the opportunity to travel abroad. And I was fortunate enough to attend and being there and actually seeing what goes on and what she has done to enable is beyond belief. But if you just have no idea of what she has done to do this, and she really does need to be commended. An excellent job.
Thank you. 25 years. 25 trip.
This trip was in the last century, 1900.
1900.
Well, we truly appreciate it. I would.
One of those days, you join one of our trips, but it's been a while in the summer for us in the fall.
If I get to get my big rear end in an airplane, I would definitely, I'd love to. I'd love to get a scot. Yeah. I look good in a kiln. Okay, there you go. All right, thank you, Mr. Lees. I would recommend that board members approve this February 17, 2025 Board of Education minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity and a chance to look over them?
Yes, I'll make that first.
Okay. Then probably move to second. And all those in favor, signify by saying yes. Okay, fast. On a consent agenda items, I would recommend that board members approve the quality. Uh, on the financial piece, just bills to pay, the budget revisions, transfer between funds, treasury reports, and then the personnel schedule. Just a few items. Just one resignation of a teacher. For any bus driver, substitute, uh, transfer custodian, a long-term sub. Resignation of a substitute custodian, uh, substitute aid custodian. Boy, Mrs. Boukaw is a homebound teacher. And Michelle Poland as the lead special education teacher at Ice Mountain Elementary School. Denver Rigman is assistant football coach. Uh, permission to post for a secure program improvement team. And this is through a grant, thank you, Mrs. Uh. Thank you, guys. Miss Embry has, has got, so it is all grant funded to put a team together to work on all of us. And then volunteers. Do we have any discussion on any of the consent agenda items?
I'm wondering.
Second layer.
Now I'm good.
That a motion then to approve the consent agenda items?
Well, I'll make that motion to approve consent agenda items.
Do I have a second? I'll second. They properly move to second. And I'll say the verse, signify by saying aye. Fast, okay? On the non-consent agenda items, I would recommend that board members approve just revisions. Back up for review that we reviewed, uh, 2010, ensuring the quality of education. Policy 2020 field trips and policy 2050 copyright protected materials. I've worked through them. I really didn't see any of any. They seem to be up to date with this. They've been updated since 2019, reviewed. Okay.
Also move.
Okay.
Say Kathy.
Yep. I'll second that. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion fast. And B, I would recommend that board members approve and sign the resolution opposition to West Virginia House Bill 2480. Um, is everyone familiar with 2480? Does anyone want to be an eliminate board? Yeah, eliminate counting boards make 11, 11 boards within a statement. Oh, okay. I'll read something about that. And kind of put us in a, I guess, a proverbial basket of oranges when we're apples, you know, it just.
Oh, that's gonna, it's gonna do that to a lot of counties. We need one of them with, uh, your larger counties that have more, more people from towns.
From what I've gathered, there's really not a, um, a wind behind that sail, so thankfully.
I actually talked.
Yeah, tried several times.
I talked to both our delegates and at least, uh, both our delegates are no go. They, they don't see that.
Well, how is somebody from Jefferson County going to, because you know that's where we're going to get lucky. How is somebody from Jefferson County going to, they don't have the same needs. As what we have here in Hampshire. I mean, every county is different and needs their own set of board members for what the county needs. So I will make that motion that we sign the resolution in opposition of West Virginia House Bill 2480. I'll second that.
Okay, then probably move to second. And all those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Motion fast. I would recommend we go into executive session for a short period of time before I make my next recommendations, just like Dave before.
I'll make that motion that we go into executive session at this time.
Yeah, I have a motion. And I'll say just explicit to discuss the, uh, board action for a possible approval of a suspension of an employee. Yeah, if we have a motion, do we have a second?
Who made the motion?
I made the motion. Go into executive.
I'll make the second.
Okay, then probably move to second. And if we go into executive session, we'll discuss the non-consent personnel item. All those in favor, signify by saying yes. Motion passed. We are retiring to open session, or executive session at 7:13 PM.
Back out of the executive session. I'll make a motion that we return to open session.
I'll second. Okay, then probably move to second. And all those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
We have now returned to open second, uh, at 7:16 PM. There's no decisions made, um, in executive second. I would recommend that board members approve the one-day suspension of employee number six, Amanda Bradfield, without pay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Okay, then properly move to second. All those in favor of a superintendent's recommendation of a one-day suspension of employee number six, Amanda Bradfield, without pay, signify by saying yes. Motion passed. On others, I'll do, you want to do your, anything on your free or go first? You can go ahead. Okay, uh, just an update. We did move South Branch Elementary School. It was successful. Uh, I've been in there. I was in there Thursday, Friday, did not make it today, but, but making adjustments to the parent and the bus dismissal. Bus morning, what was great and, uh, evening was got back almost to Depot Street. So we made adjustments and this is Morse, but an announcement. So they are detouring those people, can't pick up into the parking lot around it. And it's working and the way the system they've got, they're able to load three, four students at a time and it's expediting. So and we're just working on getting buses in and out and use of the gate and JW is working with these drivers. Uh, for you guys, uh, that was Romney Middle School report card, Mr. Brazil, when I checked with him, that problem has been fixed. And Adam, and the state has done some additional training with the principals and that is all completed. Thank you. I brought, I will give it to you. Uh, anybody needs a copy of the financial, uh, disclosure statements, I have my copies of my monthly report from the month of February for you. Mr. I don't check with, have you seen the follow-up last time and sent you a message that, uh, Trooper Carson and Sheriff Son said they would have a presence. Uh, I've seen the way I saw, okay. Uh, JW did give me an update. He thinks he's with the blinky lights. Uh, he's contacted with the state and thinks they will, uh, allow us to, if we pay the upfront, then they will be covered under transportation and we can be reimbursed online. I spoke to Mr. Reese that, uh, they're getting ready. They rearranged the, the iron. And they're going to pour the flagpole area Friday for out at Ice Mountain. Uh, Mrs. Stump shared today a letter that she was awarded a pro officer grant in the amount of $30,000. So that's more than what, usually we only get about $15,000. She was able to secure $30,000 in, in the pro officer. Individuals that broke into the Springfield, Green Spring are in court in trial. So, uh, we had to provide for the, uh, the prosecuting attorney and the judge assess value of the damages. So we, we submitted up roughly about $91,000 is what we totaled. Mrs. Slocum, I went down and we, we figured about a thousand dollars for door replacements. Uh, we calculated and, and totaled the books. There were about 4,000 books. Really? That were, had the, some had been with the far extinguisher spray and some were covered up, but I just didn't want to take a chance of putting those books in the hands of kids impossible. And I think so. So we, we, yeah, we, we took an outreach of the books. Some, you know, were five dollars to, I'll put it up to $20. So we valued them at $15. So $60,000 for the books. Uh, $20,000 for the supplies down in another room. And if we had to use our custodial supply. We, what Mrs. Slocum and I estimated, how many days it would take in the mouth, we estimated about $10,000 for cleanup. So if we, we submitted a, a deal for $10,000. Now with part of that, will they, uh, will there be restitution on the damages to the building? Because in that one bar classroom, they had, uh.
Broke the windows.
Yeah, broke the frame of the windows. Honestly, I don't think. Honestly, I don't think so.
I don't, yeah, how do you, yeah, how do you, how do you get restitution from?
And that fixed a pretty good thing.
Yeah, but yeah, it, how do you get restitution, how do you get something?
Uh, we were scheduled for tomorrow or something, but I think the company emailed us back for March eleventh, we are, we're going to begin the assessment of the school next door for the contaminants, for what needs to be abatement, abated and so forth, so we will have a, you know, when it goes out to bid for dent load, they will already know what's been declared that needs to be evaded and is contaminated, and they can come in and punch holes in the walls, whatever, to, to look for whatever they're, they're finding, so they, so once it goes out, this is what will be.
But then with that assessment, that, that.
That's it, that's it.
Yeah.
There was surprises, there was surprises.
Okay.
Uh, I did reach out to uh Mrs. My Lady Janice, and she referred me to Mr. Brinker, Freddie Brinker, so I have made contact with both. Mr. Brinker did call me about working with them to get the graduation uh murals, photos in the old high school, and I even volunteer, if he, he's available, I'll have the maintenance or I will help him take them down and move them to the museum, but I did make them aware of, you know, things will probably begin to speed up in, in the processes move forward.
Okay.
Uh. And we did get the bookcases that the high school students uh manufactured and made, and the maintenance crew and I delivered them to the, to the staff at, at Ice Mountain Elementary. We, we delivered ten new bookcases.
All right. I'd say Metro Eglaine is, uh.
They did a great job with them.
Yeah, wonderful job.
So. I, so now Denise and I are, are just slowly, Crystal, you know, start the uh process of trying to get the rest of the stuff online and inventory and put out for up on the website to be encompassed and for bids to come in. I think Crystal had the first round of a few things that came down today, I think.
Yeah. Those sold well.
Yes, yes.
Uh, so, I did have one thing on a follow note, uh, I'm sure everyone's heard about the passing of Mr. Hansel.
Hansel.
Yeah.
And, and I did hear about this last night, that uh Mrs. Anita High, who was a cook for many, many years in our area, she worked with me at, at Augusta, so she passed away last evening.
Basically.
Our daughter.
Yes, them and Rose.
Yes, to both families.
Yeah. She battled cancer for eleven years.
Really?
Yes.
Wow.
Yes. She was quite the true.
And I think Mrs. Jeff Reese, Mrs. Mom's old, did see them, and they attended the open house, it was well, well, well attended on, on his lady, I mean.
And, and I was, if I'd have saw you when I was leaving, I would have told you, one of the um teachers back in that section, I don't know what grade it was, but the section where they had, they made the library.
Yes.
That library, she was just so happy, I mean, she just was, she was walking three feet off the ground with all the, how happy she was with the new digs, you know?
And I would say anyone that would question need for new schools, now that everything's been removed out of this building, I walked through it again the other day, and it's anybody that walked through would never say we didn't need a new school, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one was a no brainer, for sure.
Well, excited kids over that gym. And the gym, gym, gym.
Yeah, there was a couple things that I had heard, you know, you hear all these rumors through the grapevine and through the rumor mill and everything, and I just, you know, you just put it on the back burner because you go and you find out. And I was pleasantly surprised to find out the rumors were wrong.
Yay.
Yes, so it's beautiful gymnasium and cafeteria, it's just beautiful.
They're all three beautiful buildings.
Yes, yes.
Well, I guess I'd rank us to, um, we need to discuss the colored school.
Yeah.
But we've been getting quite a bit of interest, I know you have, I have, you know, us collectively.
Yeah.
You know, been quite a bit of discussion about the colored school, um, I know that we had been approached before about, yeah.
You know, I don't, this is just a.
Are we still, are we still an open session then?
Yeah. Just a, it's a, I mean, there is a lot of stuff we have to get out of that, I, I think. And, and that's no longer used, and I think it's parts and pieces that, that, what it was designed for is, are outdated and no longer used, you know, so, but maybe the board would consider, maybe that could be a, serve two purposes, restored somewhat a bit, and maybe that could be the museum.
Hmm. I'd like.
Well, that.
Okay, I'm gonna be honest, I'd like to see it restored and turned into a museum. For what it originally was. The colored school, I would like to see that. I don't know how we could ever pull it off, I don't know if we ever could, but I would look, that's my person, just that's Kim Holden's.
Somebody would have to probably speak and secure grants to.
Exactly.
To do a lot of restoration.
Because I think that's one of the few that's left standing and not used for another purpose, the one in Hardy County was turned in, I believe was turned into their board office, don't quote me on that, but I, I was told that a few years back, and I think this is one of the only ones that's original, standing. But, and could be, could be used for that, and could be used.
Our church is not, I mean, we're right around the corner from there, so there's a lady that I take home every Sunday night, and I make a point of driving up there, and just, there's no place, they're gonna have to do an awful lot to, to create a parking place for any kind of museum, and we've got a monetary crunch, people want to talk about we're the one that gets seventy-two percent of, I mean, I'm trying to turn seventy-two percent of, of, you know, and, and it may be true, it is.
Oh, it is, absolutely.
Um.
Yeah.
But everybody's taking a crunch, you know, coming off of our high, which we kinda got, all got high on our COVID money. You know, now we're down to brass tacks, we're down to reality, and I'm not necessarily opposed to turning it over, but I can't see, I cannot justify in my mind us taking on any more expense.
No, 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 I could not suggest we take on any more expense, that was just my wish.
Right, and that, but that front building, because that's what they, you know, it's like the first time they came, they asked for it, the second time, they asked for a little bit more, okay.
I don't see how we can do that.
No, I think, yeah.
The second part, there's no way, and the only way, they're gonna have to talk, there's a trailer back there with at least one outbuilding, I always come through at dark, so I can't really tell behind the trailer, there's more than one, I don't know if they want to try, try to, you know, the, the town wants to try to deal with those people, you know, to possibly, you know, buy them out or whatever, that's up to them, but the parking's gonna have to go to the backside of it, not, not to the front, to take something that we're using and would be financially a hardship for us, I think you can see that.
Because we would have to replace that where we have our warehouse.
Um, and that's not being, I mean, you're just being pragmatic.
And I know they don't want to move it because it does something to the historic quality or whatever, but honest to goodness, in my opinion, that might be their best option.
That's been my thought all along, every, every time I drive past there.
Um, because I am, I am not gonna hand over, and this is Kim Holden speaking again, I'm not speaking for the board, this is me. I'm not gonna just hand over a valuable piece of property that is being used and serving this county and that we need, I'm not just gonna hand it over. I'm not.
And we're, and in that, if anybody for any of the minutes or whatever, the guy you, I see that talking, what you're talking about is the building that's in front of the colored school.
Yes.
The whole storage.
I'm not just gonna give that, no, we use that, we need that anyway.
There are four feet between them.
Not much. Not much at all, it's wedged in there.
Now, there is a little on the backside.
There.
But it's, it's.
It's very little.
I guess my, just my spin on it is, there, there were a couple things, um, for one, if the town of Romney, what I'm doing, I would think there would have to be some sweat equity. Our maintenance department, they spend way too thin right now.
Our maintenance is working.
There's no way, there's no way in the world, I would, I would support asking those guys to do, we ask too much anyways.
And I, and I'm gonna reiterate this again, whatever decision that we make, if we give anything, it's as is where is, and you don't come back in a year and say, I want another twenty thousand dollars to fix something, because if there's ever a building that's gonna have to have fixed it, that's the building.
And this will probably get myself shot on the way out of Romney, but, and this is just asking, can Romney really handle another project right now? You know what I mean, are we facilitating with getting them further and further behind the board, they have these grand ideas, there's nothing wrong with these grand ideas, they're wonderful, but facilitating them, you know, financially.
Yeah, do they have too many arms?
Yeah, you know, are we just.
But then we're getting into something that's not our business.
Right, right, but.
Exactly.
You know?
Um. Let me ask you this, Mr. Poncian, um. I have a wonderful, is it a, is it, the class, not C T E that Mr. Kettley has, is it still building trades, or is it just a, like a shop? I mean, what kind of a classroom is it?
I think there's different levels, I think the, the, the crew that built the bookcases, they have a new terminology that I posted, they are, they are maintenance and operational.
Oh, okay.
It's fancy way of saying they're doing woodworking.
Okay.
Well, they're.
They're great for our.
Yeah, yeah, they were very.
Just thinking.
And, 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 you know, he has it designed, I mean, it is a simulated workplace, because I dealt with one student who was, who was the shop foreman, I mean, you know, he, he, Mr. Kettley allowed him to interact with. Me, yeah. And.
True, all right, well, here's my thoughts, have this wonderful ass that's teaching young men and women a useful skill. Is there any way that, I mean, who knows, one of them might want to get into remodeling? Is there any way that class could do something to help out on that building?
Well, I think they got enough projects and, and probably, you know, you know, it's working at the high school, by the time we would get those students down there, by the time they would have turned racks, their, their class, their, their block is about over.
But, but isn't there some way that, that we could work something out, I don't know, I'm just trying to think outside the box.
If we did something like that, then we're keeping our ownership in it, and I'm, I think we need to decide, do we want any ownership in it, or do we want to just say, you take it?
What is?
You, you deal with, and I don't, I mean, it sounds like an all, a, a really good idea, but later, that gives a hook for somebody to come back and say, hey, it's your class, you, you guys pay for the new roof that this group's going on.
Again, honestly, to look at a very, very basic, what benefit does the old colored school down in Romney serve as an educational basis? And that's what we're here for, is to educate the kids.
Well, see, and that's why I was thinking, that would be an educational way to use it.
Oh, yeah, I could turn, I could turn anything.
I'm trying to think outside the box. I don't know.
Is it, is it a liability for us to hold on to right now?
I think it is, because what if somebody goes in there and gets hurt? Come on, you can't trust, people break into anything.
Well, and, 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 you know, it's, it, it has some financial assets in it that we need to get out, even if, if we have to, you know, salvage some of the, you know, pieces in there that is metal, I mean, there, there's some redeeming value of, of the contents in it. I haven't been in it for, for years, years, can't if you say something just move to, but if they move up there to the, they could move up there to the, to the bond school.
Once you move it.
And you.
Once you move it, it loses its historic value, so then in turn, they would lose any potential for funding.
Grants, um. I mean.
It is, it.
Good, okay, I am good with giving just and only the colored school to the team, that's where I am good at.
But I would want it in, in the small print somewhere, once we salvage out of it, what we, what, Mr. Poncian goes on, huh?
The interior.
The interior contents, but they get it as is where is, and.
And that's it.
And, and what they do with it, whether they talk the neighbors into selling their property, that's on them, but we cannot give them the, the building in the front of it, we can't.
I will, I will.
Bring you that parcel one, yeah.
No, I'm like, no, the colored school and the colored school only.
But let me ask you, are, are even entertaining this idea at this time right now, are, are we just guilty as well? We were talking, I was talking about Romney, are we, are we adding more things on our plate, we're already balancing, a balancing act right now, you know, we're coming to crunch time to get rid of five schools worth of materials, you know, we have.
I think it is a balance right now.
Yeah.
I could get these to go, we, we've got, there are good, it, it, it doesn't come to the top of our priority of what needs to, to, to occur within the next six months.
It's a year.
I would say a year at least, because first is six months.
But then.
Yeah.
I get, would it, would it be too boring to say to, to open a conversation with, with the mayor, say, yes, you know, at some time, we, we would be receptive, but right now, you know, if you want to go forth and try to acquire more property around it, go ahead, you know, but right now, that's, it's not a concern of ours.
That's, that's not what we absolutely have to take care of first.
Well, we have priority things. Is there something, somebody you, that's had dealt with legal things, I mean, if they do, if we say that, we need to give them some kind of.
A definitive date.
Uh, well, and a promise that we're not gonna back out on them, okay, so we're like, yes, we, we plan on giving you this, but we've got a lot of things that come first. You know, and if you want to purchase, if you want to talk to, I don't know these people, I mean, these people maybe watching, end up watching some of this stuff online and say, what's this woman talking about giving us our house in the trailer, I mean, that's not on me, it's up to the, it's up to the city.
But, but Poncian just said, what, what about reach out to Louisa, that was the lady of the Teal Theater.
Louisa?
Yeah.
Well, her husband contacted me too.
Well, I'll reach out, I'll make contact with this weekend.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's a good segue then right into C, discussion of the action on the former Springfield Green Spring Elementary School.
Do we have any board movement with the survey?
No, I still have been able, I gotta get Mr. Poncian or somebody to show me where the.
Where the topic is.
Now, so I just draw an imaginary line and say, here's where we're.
Yeah.
But we, you know, our biggest task now is, you know, we've got the uh the furniture that was stored for the new South Branch, now we've got to go in there and sort of get this side, and that's what I, you know, Denise and I talked today, are we, do we want to go in there and move the, the assets out of that building to here for, for sale, or do we want to just leave them there, take it, sell it? You know, the problem is, what she and I are just in gathering is just the mass volume of stuff we've got, and trying to get it up, sold and moved and inventoried, and, and trying to rearrange it, you know, I, I think what we, we've, I've come to the conclusion, the, the chairs and most of the furniture that, that came out of the the Augusta site where we're at, that is still setting in our new boardroom, is the better furniture, so that's probably what we need to save. But we need to move out what's in the old Slainsville School. Save, but we need to move out what's in the old Slainsville School. Move it, sell it so that we have room to move, move what we need into it and, and. So it's just shuffling, you know, and, and then. You know, the pieces as we sell it, well, do we wanna shuffle it? Sell it, then have to have somebody hold it, then in, in either way, the man.
Yeah.
You know, it, it's just trying to, and again, finding the time for. Crystal and Denise and I, you know, just literally go do an inventory, start taking photographs so we can be able to. To, to post, you know. There, there's a lot of stuff and there's a lot of, you know, they did a great job, both schools, all three schools have done a great job of. Taking stuff and placing it in isolated areas, separating. I mean, if you go out to. The old Slainsville School, you know, they've got a room of desks, they've got a room of chairs, they've got a room of tables, they, you know, same way. And, and you go over here and they did it, you know, they brought a lot of the stuff. In the part clear to the cafeteria, so they've got, you know, in, in the big cafeteria, they've got, they've got rows of chairs, they've got rows of tables. They've got rows of, you know, so.
What about back items and stuff that are in the office in Springfield? Are those things, those are they bought?
A what's that?
The file cabinet?
No.
There's nothing in there, okay.
Well, I would say, and you're on, you're on the committee and, and I, I'd actually heard this, you know, in passing with some pretty smart people. Is it, it used to be reset announcement epic?
Yeah.
Epic, what if we were to hire somebody from Epic, you know, at thirteen, fifteen dollars an hour to assist Miss Castro? Because this is, I think this is a much bigger job than anybody imagined, but there's just a sheer volume. Like you're saying, Mr. Poncian, finding the time to be able to do that. What if we were to hire somebody at fifteen, eighteen? To do just that.
I, I, I'll be, I'll, I'll probably be the devil's advocate, be Denise.
Okay, yeah.
I, I, I'm, I'm chasing my tail to, to balance the budget. Where am I gonna find money to pay?
Well, and maybe, and with that, I understand exactly, but wouldn't we be more effective? With, if we had somebody putting that stuff up and was able to sell it more effectively than, than Crystal?
Well, here, here's our first, what we're going to try, and I think she's got the okay from the state. Our, our plan is to open up. All one, two, three, they were schools to our. Our school employees.
Okay.
So look.
What you need for your classroom.
What you need for your classroom, not for personal, not to take home.
Right.
For classrooms, there's something that you need in your classroom.
Rabbit.
It's, it's open, open house.
They're doing that. It's brick built.
Yeah.
They are doing.
Okay, once we get through that process, we've talked about maybe over here is to have a silent auction.
Okay.
We go in, open it up, you know, from eight to noon, it's open to the public, you come in and. We will put sheets up throughout the building on different pieces and people bid. We'll certainly probably put a reserve on. You know, have a reserve designated and.
So where would you do that?
We wanna try it maybe next door.
At Romney?
In Romney.
Okay.
So I mean, we would open it up to.
That's a good idea.
The entire, anything within the building, if we haven't tagged it, you just come to us and say.
Am I wrong or wasn't there a plan to let the public come in and see? Take a tour of the old building in Romney and wouldn't that be, wouldn't that work out sort of?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, you know, someone comes in and says, well, I'd like to, I'd like to buy. You know, say. All the porcelain sinks in the building, you know, I'll give you, you know, so we'll put a tag, you know, or, you know, ceiling type lights. You know.
That would work very well.
We're, we're trying to brainstorm as, as much as we can to keep the process and, and moving, you know, I know. They have a lot of round tables, you know, so Mrs. Haynes has expressed an interest in. For her teacher wanting them for, for, for centers for, for. For in classrooms, so we'll certainly give her. The high school staff. You can use account, but not, the only thing I'm fearful of with, for the high school is. If those teams will have enough. They're, they're, they're limited with their building, the height restraints that will work. For the high school, I, I think that's what we're probably gonna run into.
I think that's a great idea. The only thing that is, and concerns me, not to be, like you said, play devil down, get her doubly downer. Is that, you know, I want, I want, and then you're end up with our schools are gonna be packed full of the gills.
Chugged again.
Yeah. Building.
Building and administrator to sort of police.
Right.
Yeah, you don't need twenty-nine chairs.
Well, couldn't you, couldn't you have them fill out a piece of paper, the teachers come in, fill out a piece of paper that they, it's a requisition form. This is what I would like to requisition and they have to get their principal to sign off on it.
Well, some process, but I'd like for them to move it too, cause I, I'm, as I said, we don't have time to make.
Well, I'm saying that, yeah.
To have a hundred, a hundred requests and then you're around it and pick it up, take it and deliver.
Or just at least when they take it, make a list, do like their own personal inventory.
So those are just, you know.
What a guy.
Ideas that Mrs. Hodd and I have been bouncing off one another as.
So, but.
To maybe ex, try something and maybe expedite the, the, the process.
Because it's gonna have to be expedited over here because you said the assessment over here is on the March eleventh.
Yes, so that would, then, once that's completed, then, then we can, then we're able to go to put it out to bid.
Okay. Well, if a good assessment, Poncian, if um, hopefully, you know, there'll be, be fine time. Uh, to be able to find where that subject is. The only thing that I'm fearful of and, and I, I know that we have brought plans and stuff up on the. The agenda several times is just, I can see them writing on the wall and it seems like we have assets there and I, and I'm playing. Playing for, you know, to get them, but I think they're gonna be worth less money. You know, we're in a process, we need assets, we need, we need cash. You know, I mean, and why not get rid of the assets now before something might happen, you know, I mean, maybe a realignment. And properties aren't worse what they, they were.
Think when I drove in this evening, we, we really haven't made, board hasn't made a decision on. We had this piece Cooper Farmfield surveyed out, but we haven't. Made a decision.
That does, I thought that was already decided to get into the.
Well, I guess it probably need to make it official.
Okay.
Make it a, a legal document.
Okay. We, we need to put that.
Oh, I had that to our next, yeah, if you can make that up, put down on the agenda. I thought it was already done now. Well, I'll, I'll double check, but I don't think we've made anything of, of that official. Yeah. For Cooper or on Cooper.
Yeah, it's a lot of different ages.
All right, that's all I have.
Do we have any other further business? I did wanna share with group, and I don't know if I'm behind, uh, it seems like we had quite a number of uh, FFA members. That were to capital, I guess, today. Uh, they were down there, yeah. Pretty, uh, pretty exciting stuff. There, everybody's looking sharp in their official dress.
Everybody?
Everybody, everybody's looking sharp.
Cool.
So our next get together is Wednesday, right?
Wednesday, Wednesday is five thirty at the new board office for student here.
Wednesday five thirty.
And then Monday. Monday, March seventeenth at Romney Middle School for local school improvement council.
And, and it's what says they're possible. Passing out for.
Will that, will that happen here?
We'll do it all at Romney Middle School.
Okay.
Surely you'll let us know what time that's.
That's a new board office.
We're drawing on the seventeenth is at the. Romney Middle.
Romney Middle.
All right, I appreciate everyone you're helping.
Yes, I wanna pop you out.
Thank you, yes.